October 24th, 2023 council meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Mapp?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
We do have a quorum present, so I'll ask if you will, please stand and join me in the prayer and pledge of allegiance at this time. Heavenly Father, we thank you on today for this day, all that it was meant to be. We thank you for everyone represented up here tonight, Lord, that our minds be stayed on the best possible suggestions and solutions we can make for our city. I ask still, Lord, that as you touch us, touch our minds and our hearts, that we continue to remember those that are going through their time in hour of bereavement, those that are going through sickness, those that are just going through, not only in our community, but in our state, at our state level, our national level, and just in our country as a whole. Father, we thank you on tonight, and we can't thank you enough for all that you've done for us and that all that you will continue to do. In Jesus' name we do pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so at this time... Alright, this portion would normally be our public comment section of our work session, but we do not have anyone signed up to speak tonight, so we'll move on to the next portion. You all have, you all have received a copy of the October 10th council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made to these minutes? Is there a motion to adopt?
Go move.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Mapp?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The October 10th minutes are adopted as official. I'm gonna open up tonight with my comments. This portion is a section that says the mayor's comments, and a couple of things I just wanted to bring out. The Land Bank Authority Comments Committee, I'm sorry. Had a few names that were put out to us, and we're still kind of seeking one person. So rather than make that appointment tonight, because we're still seeking one person, I know I did hear from Mr. Chambers, Ms. Mapp, Councilman Reynolds, and Councilwoman Walden, Shinholster. Dr. Lee, did you have any comments that you want to make towards that? Okay, so we still have one, one more person that we need to name to that board. The names that were given were Reverend Clarence Rayford, Andrew Harrington, Hogana Harrison Walton, and the last spot that we need to look at feeling, I think we had a suggestion there. Do anybody oppose of the names that been called out so far?
Can you repeat those names, please?
Reverend Clarence Rayford, you know Reverend Rayford has been in this community, lifetime community person. He pastored for over 40 years, and he also worked at Central State Hospital probably over 40 years, am I correct, somewhere around in that case. But well-known to this community, and I think he would have the best interest of the community at hand as far as the Land Bank Authority. Andrew Harrington is a longtime realtor. I worked with, um, Herring, I'm sorry, Harrington, thinking about. Andy and I worked together for numerous of years. We started out at Caldwell Banker together, and he's now the broker of his own company. And I think he would make an excellent choice as far as giving us the opinion from a realtor standpoint. And you all know, I stated from the beginning that we, we needed a diverse group to represent the Land Bank Authority that had some background in what's going on here. I think, Mr. Reynolds, you suggested Ms. Hogana Harrison Walton?
Yes, ma'am, I did. I supplied a list of names that would be appropriate for discussion. And if I could, Madam Mayor, would it be appropriate if we amend the agenda for a more complete and thorough discussion of this on the agenda rather than under the mayor's comments?
We can put it, we kind of have a full agenda tonight, and we have some things that might take it, take up, but let me move this since, well, let me, let me go back. The names that have been called thus far, as I asked, is any, are y'all in agreement with those names for the agenda?
I think one that Walter put out more strongly than any was Ryan Pryor, an attorney who has a tremendous amount of knowledge in this area. And I had also put forth the name Gus Persley.
Yes, that's who, I knew somebody that before. And you had already talked with him, right, Mr. Chambers?
That's true.
We only have four appointments to that board.
Correct.
So, given the fact that that was one of the first names I know mentioned was Mr. Gus Persley, Gus Persley, and Andrew Herring were mentioned, and then the last one came in from Mr. Shinholster, Reverend Clarence Rayford, and then Mr. Reynolds, Hogana Harrison Walton. So rather than amend the agenda, what I would like to say, if you all are comfortable with those names called before we amend the agenda, I would like to know, are y'all comfortable with those?
How many names do we have, four or five?
I'm counting five.
If you count Ryan, that's five. Mayor, you could put those names out for consideration, but probably the better approach would be, once you have a collection of all the names, that it get placed on the agenda for a full discussion by mayor and council. And then if you're gonna put forth four names for approval, it could all be handled in the same, in the same meeting.
Okay.
It may be improper for council to acquiesce at this point, as that may be deemed to be a vote.
Okay, so, since we have the names and I've already put them out there, I'm gonna leave those names out there. And then council, can we bring this back to the agenda? City manager, can we bring it back to the next scheduled meeting? That we, go ahead.
I mean, November 14th? Yeah, that's right, that's right. So they...
Could it be moved, Jimmy, to the end of the meeting and add it on? End of the meeting tonight? Yep.
We have the listing there for appointments.
If that's, yeah, you can always amend the agenda to make an appointment, if that's what you choose to do.
Mr. Jordan, let me ask a question. Can we, also, I think we're gonna schedule a call meeting. So can we move it to the call meeting for next week? We're scheduling a call meeting for Tuesday.
Monday, absolutely.
Monday, is it Monday?
It's actually advertised, will be advertised as a call work session, but it can be advertised as a call meeting, that's what y'all prefer.
Okay, so, let's do that, council, if you all are in agreement with that. And that way, we're still moving this on down the road and not holding up anything any, any longer, if that's okay with council?
That's six days from now, so.
Well, it's another six days.
This side, are y'all okay? Yeah, it's not gonna kill anybody, okay.
So y'all, y'all want that on the agenda for the call meeting on October 30th?
And I was gonna mention that a little later in my report. Also, I just want to give an update, I guess this is an update, and I talked with Mr. Griffith today about Trinity and parking spaces, Ms. Mapp, and they are working on that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. The other questions I kind of had for you, Mr. Jordan, and I didn't get a chance to talk, so we'll talk about that.
Alright, yes, ma'am.
That's basically all I wanted to bring up, I'm just, just trying to make sure we go ahead and move things on down the road and jump on some other things. So at this time, I guess I'll be turning this part of the meeting over, just, yes, to Mr. Griffith to introduce our presentation for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. When we were going through our budget talks and formulations for the 2324 fiscal year budget, one of the things that I mentioned, and that we had a little bit of discussion about, but not a lot, was the fact that during that budget year, I was looking at the possibility of us considering and possibly bringing to you a contract for a fleet management service. I looked at a number of them, and the one that rose to the top for me was Enterprise Fleet Management. So I was put in touch with Rachel McGurr through Chief Swacker, actually, and Rachel came down and talked to us a couple of weeks ago, and I wanted her to come and share with you all the information that she shared with, with me and some of the department heads that would have a vested interest in our fleet management. I really like what she had to say. There's some, some boxes we gotta check, some I's to dot and T's to cross, and those kinds of things before we bring a contract to you, but I want you to see what she is proposing, for you to have the opportunity to ask her any questions that you may have, and then we will further our discussion on this in meetings to come, to hopefully have something in place with some service like this by the first of the calendar year. So Rachel McGurr is here tonight, and we thank her for being here. She's got a drive back to Atlanta when she gets done here, so we appreciate her being here, and, and you all have a synopsis of her report that was in your book, your box when you came in today, and we can also make her presentation available to you if you see something in there that you have interest in that is not in your synopsis. So Rachel, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Let's fix this. And I appreciate the time this evening. Thank you for meeting over the last few weeks, and to Chief Swacker, who's not here, and Major Link Boyer as well. I just appreciate the time. We've actually, we started connecting in March. I was expecting, I went out over the summer and had baby boy number two, so we reconvened this September when I was back to work full-time, so we've kept in touch, and I just appreciate all of the information that I've gotten and the opportunity to work with the city of Milledgeville so far. So, really, tonight, I just want to share with you all really what Enterprise Fleet Management is, and how we can help the city when it comes to really the total cost of owning and operating your vehicle fleet today, and that's inclusive of the regular fleet and the police fleet. So, just as an overview, most people, when they think of enterprise, they think the rental side, and that's actually not us. We're separate from that, even though we operate under Enterprise Holdings, we're really separate. So Enterprise Fleet Management, we're gonna help you with everything from your acquisition costs all the way down to resale and everything in between. So how you acquire vehicles today, how you fund your vehicles today, that's one of the big pieces we'll, we've been discussing. You guys typically pay cash today for your vehicles, and the idea is to get out of paying cash, you're able to get more vehicles in your fleet. All of the operational things that go into managing your fleet, things such as fuel maintenance and any sort of telematics, maintenance is one of the things we'll discuss tonight. And then if we think about when it's time to get out of the vehicle, how you sell your vehicles today. And that's, those are all things that Enterprise Fleet Management can help. We have been operating for more than 65 years, so we've been doing this a long time. I personally have been with the company for about 14 and a half years, so I have a lot of experience in managing clients' fleets. We work with several cities and counties, not just across Georgia, but across the US. And more, more so specifically here in Georgia, close to you guys, we work with Jones County and Baldwin County. Baldwin County actually referred Major Boyer to us. They have been a partner with us since, close to a year now, but those are a couple clients within the area. We also work, I'm just trying to think, City of Lyons, Georgia, not too far from here, City of Delonaga, City of Oakwood, City of Livonia, really over 10,000 government clients. So, you know, if you know any councilmen or mayors or other city managers, feel free to reach out, be happy to, to connect you all. So any questions about that before I move into your numbers? Great. So, so this is a summary of your fleet today. So with police, you guys have a total of 91 vehicles in your fleet today. Your average age of those vehicles is just over eight years, but if you look, over half of your fleet is over 10 years, and so that's really what's driving your cost up today, specifically from a maintenance and fuel standpoint. You're spending today, per vehicle, per month, approximately $268 in maintenance costs alone. And with my plan, we're looking at reducing those down to an average of approximately $770 a month per vehicle, and that's a significant amount of savings by moving to the Enterprise Fleet Plan. What I did was look at your vehicle purchase history over the last five years, and I took an average, and so of that average, you guys have acquired six vehicles per year, and what that does is put you on a 15-year replacement plan. And so what I mean by that is, if, if your fleet was never to grow or never to defleet, it would take you 15 years to replace your entire fleet by just replacing six per year. And that's really triple the amount of time that we want to see in, in a vehicle fleet. So I'm looking at proposing that down to just under five years, about 4.7 on average, and by doing that, there's a conservative savings of about $220,000. Now that's over a 10-year span, and that's also a very conservative number, but we know that sustainability is important to cities, and so I like to talk long-term, in between five and 10 years. Questions on your fleet? Okay. Again, our job at Enterprise Fleet is to really show you what is the optimal time to replace the vehicle, and if you look at that circle, that's really where you want your fleet to, to remain. It doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be three years or five years, it just means that you need to stay within that circle, because once you get outside of that circle, your fuel and maintenance costs are really high. And as you can see, you're way on the backside of that, which is why your costs are where they are today. So, I put together a fleet profile, and really, the, the two things we're gonna focus on is a replacement schedule over the next five years, and then the, the number of vehicles aged over 10 years. So as I mentioned, long-term sustainability is important. So I put together a schedule over the next five years to really flip the entire fleet as it stands today, from, from owning that fleet outright, paying cash, to coming on to a lease program through us. And a couple of things to mention when it comes to leases, we're different than your standard lease. We, we don't, we're not like your standard dealership lease. There are no mileage restrictions, there are no wear and tear penalties. These are essentially your vehicles, you can outfit them, the police can put, you know, the 13 or so thousand dollars worth of outfit that they need to put on their, on their vehicles, you can put the City of Milledgeville logo on there, you can do whatever you want. At the end of the day, you retain the equity to those vehicles. So just, you know, making sure everyone's aware that this is more so an open-ended funding concept, not a dealership-type lease. So again, we're looking at the next five years to replace those vehicles, but again, if we focus in on the vehicles in the fleet, 47 of those are over 10 years and older, and that's what we're really looking at replacing first. And in year one, the majority of the vehicles that we're looking to replace are the police vehicles, just because those are, are the most critical right now, and, and the most aged, so we want to look at those first, followed by the city or non-emergency response vehicles.
That's what ERV stands for in that table there, is emergency response vehicles.
Yep. So, to talk through safety, and really to show you a picture of what your fleet looks like, without going through this, if, if we fast forward to 2018, a lot of things started becoming standard on your vehicles at that year. Rear video, forward collision warning, blind spot warning, your, your rear lane change warning, all of those things became standard on vehicles. And as you look at your fleet today, 72% of your fleet predates 2018, so you don't have those safety features that you really should have on your fleet, and that's important not only when you have your, you know, officers driving on the front line, but it's important for the city drivers as well. We just want to make sure that they're in the most up-to-date and safe vehicles as possible. And if any of those vehicles did predate 2018 and had those options, you also had to pay for them, whereas again, today, all of those things come standard. So, let's get into the model, and I'm not going to go through each line by line, I know this is a lot, it could be daunting, but we'll start at the top left, and then, once I'm done with this, I'll pause for questions. So again, as we talked through your summary, your current fleet is approximately, there are 91 vehicles in the fleet today, with your current cycle at almost 15 years. Again, as I mentioned, your current maintenance costs per vehicle, per month, are averaging $267 a month, which is really high, and with my proposed plan, we're looking at actually reducing your fleet by three. You have a couple underutilized vehicles that you're not really operating today, so let's just go ahead and get rid of those. And that reduces your cycle down to about 4.7 years. Your maintenance will also decrease to approximately $77, $77 a month per vehicle. So this kind of looks green here, but the orange line up at the top, again, that's what you do today. So as I mentioned, I took an average over the last five years, and with your annual needs, you guys on average purchase six vehicles annually, which brings your, excuse me, purchase budget to approximately $314,000. Your current maintenance spend is approximately $292,000, your fuel spend is approximately $304,000, and that brings your all-in fleet spend annually to just under a million dollars, so $911,000. And with my plan, we're looking at leasing 29 vehicles year one, which brings your, your lease budget to just under $340,000, which is only about 25 more than you spend today. However, we're also going to be selling those 29 vehicles on your behalf, so you've got to account for the equity that's gonna come back. So net year one, you're looking at $222,000 in lease payments, which if you look at that is almost $100,000 less than what you pay today for six vehicles, and you're quadrupling the amount of vehicles that you're able to get. Your maintenance cost will reduce to about $216,000. Your fuel spend will also decrease to about $271,000, and so your all-in fleet spend in year one reduces to $710,000, which brings net cash back to the city of Milledgeville of just under $201,000. And as we do this year over year, you stand to see a conservative savings opportunity of about $220,000. So I will pause there and take questions or comments.
I had an uptick in about year four.
Um, yes, so are you, are you speaking on the negative? Are you, what, I'm sorry, repeat your question.
Looking at the fleet budget, and it pops over a million, it goes up, it goes down, then it goes up, and then it goes down, and then it goes up, so it's fluctuating, and I just didn't know if you have certain, you have more that are replaced on some years than you do on others, or exactly what?
Correct. So you will see some, in the net cash, you will see some negatives, and that's because in certain years, we're replacing more, but we're selling less. So maybe in year four, we're replacing, you know, 13 vehicles, but we're not selling as many on your behalf, so we're only selling 12 in year four, and those aren't worth as much. If you look at, down at the bottom left, the current fleet equity analysis, year 2027, we're selling 12 for you, but you've only got about 1,900 coming back that year, just because of time and miles, the age of the vehicles, what they're worth. So you will have some fluctuation year over year, but overall, there is a positive on the plan.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you go about choosing how many cars that you're gonna, going to sell? I mean...
So, we really want to start with the most aged vehicles, and if you remember, two slides prior, we, in the red box, there were 47 vehicles that were over 10 years. Those are the ones we want to start with, because those are the one that are costing you the most in maintenance and the most in fuel today.
Okay, so you just, but you're not gonna get all 47? You're just gonna...
No, we, we, so what we don't want to do is come in and say, hey, let's flip 91 vehicles or 47 vehicles in year one. That, first of all, we can't find 91 vehicles today. We know, we know how the industry has been since COVID, and it's, and it's tough, plus the strike doesn't help. But we, we want to have a five-year plan, is really the goal, and over the next five years, the idea is that we've turned over the entire fleet. But we want to start with the ones that are costing you the most money first.
One of the reasons that I was also very interested in this is it's getting more and more difficult for our city shop to maintain the equipment and the expertise to work on newer vehicles. I mean, you almost have to buy equipment for every make and model vehicle that you have now. And the way the maintenance program for the fleet management system works, that, that maintenance will occur at, did we decide it was nine locations here in Milledgeville?
Yeah, so I actually, I'll, this is the next slide, so...
Alright, I'm stealing you talking about.
No, no, you're fine. I just, I know there's generally, oftentimes, several questions on the actual model, but yes, so maintenance is one of the, I guess, heartburns that the city has had. Your ability to track maintenance today, more specifically on the non-police fleet, but also on the police fleet, has, has been difficult. There really is no real way, and with our maintenance programs, we're able to not only help you with your own vehicles today, but we're able to help with the leased vehicles today. We have certified shops that we partner with, not just in Georgia, but all across the US. We actually partner with over 50,000 shops across the US, but here in Milledgeville, I think there's between nine or 12 shops in the city locally that we partner with, so you're able to take your vehicles to those shops and get them serviced. The police already uses Pittman's Auto today, and they are a certified shop of ours, so the benefit of our maintenance program for your leased vehicles is great, because it's fixed and budgeted throughout the entire lease term. And that's great for the city, because you can budget for that more appropriately. Instead of spending, on average, 270 bucks a month, now you're looking at maybe paying, just as an example, on, on this model, $77 a month throughout the entire lease term. So if in year three, you have, you know, a blown transmission or something, in, in one of those vehicles, you're not paying for that repair, you're just paying that fixed cost, and you take it to the shop to have it repaired. And then for your own vehicles, until we've cycled out of all of those vehicles over the next five years, we have a bridge program that really gives you the same benefit, so you still take them to that service shop, you just pay a management fee. You just pay a management fee to have us manage those vehicles, and whatever services those vehicles have, you see that on the backside of your monthly invoice. But clients that are on our maintenance management program also see a reduction in costs, because we have a team of over 250 now, we've just hired about 20 more, ASC-certified technicians, and it's their sole responsibility to make sure that the right work is being done on your vehicles in the right, you know, appropriate amount of time, downtime as far as less. And we'll also make recommendations, if you are starting to spend, you know, $5,000 on these vehicle repairs, we're going to make a recommendation to sell those vehicles.
And the maintenance piece is available 24/7 through a dashboard, and we can look and see the maintenance on every vehicle. And part of the problem we have now is people not necessarily getting their vehicles maintained when they should. And the information that's available on that dashboard, in conjunction with new WEX cards that would also come with the fleet maintenance program, would give us the opportunity to manage that better.
One of the issues when we started meeting, actually back in March, that we had was collecting your data. As I mentioned, you just don't have any real way of tracking your maintenance today, and it's really difficult. And it's important that a vehicle's oil change gets done, because if you've got someone driving around on behalf of the city, and, you know, they blow an engine because they're not maintaining it properly, you know, that falls back on the city. And so it's just important to properly maintain, and we're able to really do that and help you with that on your behalf. And additionally, as Hank mentioned, we've got a customer website that's available to you guys 24/7. It's very interactive. You're able to log on and really see everything involved in that vehicle, from when it was purchased to all of the maintenance history, all of the fuel data, mileage, and you've even got settlement statements on there to show you how much we're selling those vehicles for you on your behalf.
Is it an attachment of the other maintenance shops that you said that are around here?
So I can send you that information of the actual shops. This is just a map, and it shows just the amount, you know, within Milledgeville. We reviewed, though, a few weeks ago when we met, we reviewed and looked at all of the shops that are local to Milledgeville. But if that's something that you'd like me to share, I can do that.
And the depth of the warp by shop, or the depth of the warp needed on the vehicle will oftentimes guide the choice of the shop. For example, if it's just an oil change service, Jiffy Lube is one of the ones that's in town. So we get in and get out quickly there. If it's a major mechanical issue, then Pittman's, especially on the bridge program, Pittman's or somebody like that. If it's tires, Ivy Tire Service is part of their group. So, and plus, I think Butler, Shieldry.
Butler.
Were two dealers that stick out in my mind.
For warranty work.
Yeah, for warranty work. So there's a good group of businesses available in town. Because I shared with Rachel, that was one of my big concerns. If the county was already doing this, and then we did this, were people going to be able to keep up with the work? And that's the other piece where enterprise steps up force. I mean, if a police vehicle goes in for major mechanical work, the enterprise people are there, working to get it back, turn it back around as quickly as possible. And we don't, that's another thing, and it's not their fault, but that's another issue we have with the city shop. It can't, oftentimes, things can't get turned around quite as quickly as they need to.
And if you think about it from a maintenance standpoint, again, your vehicles are older today. They're really double the age, you know, which they should be, so there's a lot more unscheduled repairs that are happening. And when you're in newer vehicles that are, you know, not as aged and easier to maintain, the work will come down. The maintenance will come down, and it should really just be your routine scheduled maintenance, things like oil changes, tire rotations, things of that nature.
Any other questions for Rachel? Obviously, we'll discuss this further, but this gives you the initial information. And I've already asked Rachel to send us a draft contract that we'll have Mr. Jordan look at, and then we'll bring it back to you all and talk through what are some items that maybe you would like to have on there that aren't, or some items that are on there that we may need to look at, look at changing.
Would this include breakdowns, roadside services?
Yes, it would.
It does. Yes. The flat.
Yeah. Some of you know that I had to pull under the overhang of a Masonic Lodge in, right outside of Savannah two years ago, and change a tire on the city vehicle. And had we had enterprise, I could have just made a phone call.
Yes, so roadside is available at no extra cost, 24/7 actually. So if you're driving down, you know, well, it's in Atlanta this year, but for GCCMA or whatever, you know, conference you're attending, that would be included. But if you think about, and if you look at a vehicle, really, everything on that vehicle, I'm just using a half-ton pickup truck, for example, for maybe public works. If you look at that half-ton pickup truck, everything on that vehicle, including brakes and tires, is something that enterprise, that would be serviced. Just anything beyond your standard accidents.
And I'll be honest with you, most of you all don't use city vehicles very much, but when you do, I have concerns about you all being on the road. Not that the vehicles aren't in good shape, but if any of y'all had had to change that tire that day, I mean, that would not have happened, and I understand that, and that's fine. I mean, I was, I was fine with doing it, even though I looked like a drowning rat when I got running from sweating, but that concerns me. And the opportunity to be able to have that available is a big deal. I've also been talking to Rachel. They work with a third party that would put GPS tracking on our vehicles as well, so we could determine if they were to make, so we can make sure they are going where they're supposed to go. And so that would be something that we would be looking at in the contract as well.
One last question. Would this help with insurance?
It actually does. So, you know, the newer vehicles you have, right, we talk about the safety features that yours lack today. Typically, insurance companies give, I don't know if it's a discount or something, but it does help reduce your insurance costs by having newer, more reliable, safer vehicles on the road.
And also, what we're finding, Dr. Lee, with the age of our fleet, when a vehicle is wrecked, it doesn't take much to total it, because it's already so old. And then we have to turn around and spend the money that it takes to buy a brand-new vehicle. So it would be helpful with that, I think.
And one last thing I'd like to add is our resale. So today, you guys are selling through GovDeals, auctioning them, and unfortunately, you're just not getting really what you should get for those vehicles. And it can oftentimes be a bit of a hassle to use GovDeals or auction, just in general. We are going to hand-sell those vehicles on your behalf. And I talked pre-COVID numbers, just because we know that the used car market is really high today, but at some point, it will drop back down. You typically see about 10% more than what commercial black book value states that that vehicle's worth. So we are getting more on behalf of our clients' vehicles. And we have a team of over 750 remarketers, and it's their sole job to sell our clients' vehicles. And I use the city of Covington just as an example. It was a year and a half ago, we sold, we were able to short-cycle a couple of their public works fleet, and we actually cut them a checkback for nine grand per truck. They ran those for 24 months, and we were able to write them a checkback, because we had an opportunity to short-cycle those for the city. And so there's just some things that we can do beyond the acquisition and even the maintenance schedule to really help from a cost standpoint with the city.
Plus, they do the administrative work for transfer of titles and all those things after a sale occurs. Right now, Jackie's having to do that when we sell through Gov.Deals.
Yep. We'll pick them up. We can even have them decommission, especially for the police fleet. And we handle all of admin from when that vehicle's ordered through the manufacturer to when we pick it up to sell it on your behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll continue on with my report, if that's good with you.
Yes, sir.
We have the second read on our ordinance on social media and media relations policy. I have not heard from any of you on that. Are there any comments on that, anything we want to look at changing tonight before you all vote on that? We also have a first reading of an ordinance to amend the land use code, and the mayor will take you through that. I want to talk to you a little bit about the meetings that we will need to have in order to set our millage rate. I sent you some dates towards the end of last week. I've been in communication with some of you, or most, all of you today, and most of you have responded. So instead of a called work session on the 27th of October, as I initially recommended, that will become a called meeting, called council meeting on Monday, the 30th at noon, to discuss and set the proposed millage rate. We will also include on the agenda appointments to the Land Bank Authority, as you all have requested. We will have our first public hearing. We anticipate we will need three public hearings on setting the millage rate this year. We'll have our first public meeting at our November 14 regular council meeting. Second public hearing at a called council meeting on November 21 at 6:00 p.m. The reason that one begins at 6:00 p.m. is because by state law, one of our public hearings has to occur between 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. in the evening. And then we will have our third public hearing at the regular council meeting on November 28. We will have the first reading of the ordinance to set that millage rate tonight, but obviously, we'll be talking about the specific millage rate at the call meeting on October 30. You have a resolution tonight to re-adopt the five principles of ethics. You know what those are. I've shared those with you, and they are also in the resolution. We have a resolution to authorize speed breakers on King's Row. I'll talk a little bit more about that when that resolution comes up, and the mayor will entertain discussion on the South Wayne Street property project, 107115, South Wayne Street project, that we've been in discussion with Baldwin Investment Group over the last couple of weeks. One of the things I mentioned to you in my report to you last week was about our employee appreciation and service awards. I will send that out to you in terms of the times when specific departments will be honored. But I included in my report to you the list of service awards for this year. They're about 30, Sandra, am I remembering right, all the way from five years to 40 years of service for the city of Milledgeville. We'll also be including a box lunch for our employees that day. And I mentioned in my report that I would like your permission to close all non-emergency departments at 1:00 on the afternoon of November 3, as an appreciation to our staff for their work and dedication. Anyone, everyone good with that? Anyone want to discuss that further? Obviously, we will put out a notice far enough in advance, so folks know that we're doing that. But that's been our, that's been what we typically have done in the past.
Just a start time on that.
It will, I think the first group is at 9:00. We're still trying to sort the groups out, so we have an even number of groups during the times. But I'll shoot you the specific times on when those will be, so that if you can be here, that we'd love to have you here. The mayor mentioned parking at Trinity. After our last meeting, I went back and had additional conversation with John Jackson. We do have some signs coming that will be posted for no overnight parking on the parallel parking spaces on the east side of the 300 block of North Wilkinson. Mr. Jackson sent emails to all of the students who park in Bell Hall last week, asking them not to overnight park there on Saturday, and to extend the courtesy of the parking spaces to be available to church members on Sunday morning. I did not hear from anybody that that was not the case, so hopefully, maybe no calls meant they did that. And if they continue with that, and then the no overnight parking signs that we have that we'll be installing, hopefully, we've taken care of that situation. I will also, I have not yet, I've forgotten to talk to Mr. Thomas about striping a drop-off area in front of the church, but we will do that. Any comments from anybody on that? Has anybody heard from any other citizens on that in terms of if things were better or worse or the same on Sunday?
I haven't heard anything additional from the last conversation that we had.
And that's all I have. I'll share a little bit more information when we talk about the speed breaks on King's Row. But I'll take any questions that anybody has about anything I've reported on or anything else I may have information on. We will be getting the CDBG big check tomorrow at noon. Mayor Copeland, Councilmember Schenholster, and Councilmember Matt, and I will be going to Augusta to do that. Chief of Staff Hilsen Butts is already, will be going to Augusta in the morning. She will be attending the entire training session for CDBG, because upon Ms. Graham leaving, I turned CDBG administration over to her. That's all I have, Mayor, if there are any questions.
Questions? No questions, all right?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. October 31, last day for open enrollment, so if you have any changes to make, you need to let Sandra know what those are before next Tuesday. Now I'm done, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to all business, and I will ask the clerk to please read ordinance O-2310-13 to add a social media and media relations section to the personnel policies and procedure. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and we are ready to adopt.
An ordinance to amend the personnel policies and procedures to add a section entitled "Social Media and Media Relations."
All right, you all have heard the motion, I mean, the ordinance, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Matt?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The motion, I mean, the ordinance is adopted. We move to new business, and I will ask the clerk to read ordinance 2310-14 by caption, and as the first reading of an ordinance, to allow a special use at 600 South Wayne Street.
Let's conduct the first reading of an ordinance to meaning the land development code, to allow special use located at 600 South Wayne Street. This property is currently owned by Joseph Allen, and it's owned CC. Applicant desires a special use for a used car lot with 20 vehicles and accessory car wash.
So at this time, this ordinance is assigned to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will ask the clerk to give the first reading of ordinance O-2310-15 to begin the process of setting the 2024 millage rate.
An ordinance to levy and assess taxes for the support of the mayor and aldermen of the city of Milledgeville for the 2023 tax year, and to provide for the collection of the same.
As we have heard in the manager's report, we will have a called work session at which we will have an in-depth discussion. we will have a called work session at which we will have an in-depth discussion on setting the 2023 millage rate. I will ask the clerk at this time to read Resolution 2310-40 by caption.
To allow the mayor and council members to subscribe to the ethics principles as established by the certified city of ethics program, and to pledge to conduct their affairs accordingly.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to please read, call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2310-41 by caption.
A resolution to authorize speed breakers and/or risers to be placed on King's Road along, King's Row, along with the appropriate signage in accordance with Section 86-6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Millisville, Georgia.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt? So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to share a little more information with you, Mayor, that if you remember the, what's called the street speed hunt petition. Seventy percent of property owners of the residential addresses have to sign a petition. There were 30 parcels on this stretch of road of Leo Court between, excuse me, King's Road between each end of, not each end, but each point where it intersects with Leo Court. There were, so 70% of the 30 parcels, with the way we measure it, 21 signatures were needed, and 22 signatures were received. These obviously will be installed based on manual uniform for traffic control device standards. And we will also be replacing some speed breakers on Ola Court and some sections of Reef Circle that were pulled up with the reef surfacing at the same time these are installed.
Is there any other discussion? I think I heard some stuff.
I know, he covered it.
Okay. Alright, no other, just no further discussion. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is to have a discussion on the request from David Sinclair and his Baldwin Investment Group regarding his request that the city remove liens on the downtown building located at 107 and 115 South Wayne Street. We are familiar, all familiar that Mr. Sinclair addressed us at the last meeting, and we now have an opportunity to determine what direction we want to go regarding his proposal. I think everybody is aware of, and you did see the email. Did you attach that, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, it was part of the report that I sent to you on Thursday.
Okay. So we all are familiar with the email regarding their proposal. I'm going to ask council with the direction to Mr. Jordan that we have you to propose, write up a proposal.
We've all read, I assume everything's been provided to you by, I think, Mr. Cowell, Mr. Sinclair, Baldwin Investments lawyers. And so it looks like that we're maybe on the verge of getting the matter resolved as far as the nuisance abatement at 107, 115 South Wayne Street. Obviously, everything that is about to take place is going to be dependent upon the closing of that sale between Baldwin Investment Group and the current owner of the property, All-Star Properties. And so I emphasize that because we're all aware of the history that we have been going through with All-Star Properties and Mr. Simmons in trying to get this matter resolved. So hopefully, assuming that this closing takes place, we will be in a position not only to recoup the public funds, city taxpayers' money that has been spent with this nuisance abatement action, but we'll also be on the way to having the building restored and put back onto a productive use. If what everybody's representing to us is true, then that is exactly what we should expect. And what I say about that is simply, at closing, the amount owed on the current lien, which is about $13,500, that money will be collected at closing. That money, as I understand it, is going to be funded through the Downtown Development Authority with a forgivable loan, which is, quite frankly, much more preferred from the city's standpoint than a simple forgiveness of monies owed to the city, which, as you know, in other issues that we've had, that typically runs afoul of the gratuity clause of the Georgia State Constitution. So this arrangement will allow the city to collect taxpayers' money that has been expended on a, in essence, on a piece of private property. And then the financing of that money is going to be from the Downtown Development Authority in terms of economic development for the downtown, which is, which is one of the purposes that they serve. So, so that's going to be one thing that will take place. The city has not currently owed any more money, and so the city will not be imposing any additional liens on the property prior to the closing. And so that's another condition. We, you know, we have a bid, we have bid for the rehabilitation cleanup of the property, but we have not let that bid, and we have signed no contracts. And so there will be no need for any further liens to be placed on the property prior to closing. And then the Baldwin Investment Group is asking for a 60-day period post-closing in which to stabilize the facade and initiate the work. Obviously, if they do that, there will be no need for any further action relative to the nuisance abatement. And then that matter will be over with. It'll be settled, dismissed, and we will be, that problem will be resolved. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. Again, please keep in mind that it is all dependent upon a closing that I understand may take place on or before November the 15th. And at that closing is when we will release the spendings and receive our funds back to, back to the city. So, so it's a, if it all works out, it's going to be a good solution to a very bad problem.
So...
That doesn't require any, any approval or anything from you guys, unless somebody strong in the objects to that. We're simply, it's part of the nuisance abatement ongoing litigation, and we'll follow through, as I just told you we will.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Alright. So there's no other discussion or questions on that. Mr. Jordan, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, we have two alcohol license applications and renewals. I'll ask the clerk to please present the first application for discount tobacco.
This is for Arvind Kumar Hotel, for Arvind 2024 Incorporated doing business as discount. It looks like bulk and tobacco. It is for beer and wine retail package to go. Beer and tobacco?
Can't really make out that one.
It's kind of like bulk.
Yeah, that's, that's bulk.
Bulk?
Discount bulk and tobacco.
That, that's their DBA.
A lot of bulk stuff. I'm serious.
I was afraid to say that last second.
There's merchandise in there that is sold in larger quantities. Yeah, because it had been there forever, and I decided I'd walk in there to see what was going on.
So like wholesale bulk, like wholesale bulk sales.
Flash your badge out and everything.
So it's the Millisville Sam's Club, is what you're saying?
It's a smorgasbord of things, let me put it like that. I was shocked.
So you all have heard the application. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
I'll ask the clerk to present the application for WNB Factory.
This is for Alan Eugene Gray Jr. for WNB Milli, WNB Factory, located at 2485 North Columbus Street, Suite 112. And this is for a beer, wine, liquor, and Sunday sales consumption on premises.
Is there a motion to approve the application as presented?
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is a new sign.
What is this?
New business.
Big Lots.
Big Lots Shopping Center.
Big Lots Shopping Center.
Big Lots Shopping Center.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Application is approved. I'll ask the clerk to please present the alcohol license renewals that have met the inspection criteria and are ready for consideration tonight.
Mahan Enterprises Incorporated doing businesses beverageware, beverage marketplace. 2910 Heritage Place A for beer, wine, liquor, package to go. Jet Food Stores of George Incorporated doing businesses Jet Food Store, number 591111 Wayne Street for beer package to go. Little Fishing Creek Golf, 65 Highway 22 for beer consumption on premises. Metropolis Cafe LLC, 138 Wayne, North Wayne Street for beer, wine, Sunday sales catering consumption on premises. Lake Country Lanes LLC, 184 Robertson Mill Road for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales consumption on premises. Rock DJ LLC doing businesses Ned Kelly's 119 South Wayne Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales catering consumption on premises. Geysco Mexican Grill Number 2 Incorporated, 2400 North Columbus Street, A11 for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales consumption on premises. KD N Columbi, North Columbian Corpora, so KD North Columbian Incorporated, 930 North Columbus Street, number A for beer and wine package to go. MAA 1899 LLC doing businesses Marathon Food Mart, 28 Robertson Mill Road for beer and wine package to go. That concludes the list.
Are there any questions or discussion regarding the list of renewals? I'll ask for a motion to adopt these alcohol license renewals en masse.
Move, we approve.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Map?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
License renewal are approved. There are no appointments that need to be made this evening. We do need to go into closed session to discuss a personnel issue. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
At this time, we'll be going into closed session, and upon returning, once we're done. Coming back into open session, is there a motion to return to open session?
So move.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
So we are once again in open session. That concludes the items on the agenda. Is there anyone on council who has comments or announcements?
I think she would be okay with this. Both talked with Ms. Walden yesterday, and Mr. Walden is doing much better. Appears that his kidneys are about 50% operational at this point in time. They were hoping that, on their own.
Much better.
On their own.
Oh, wow.
And so he's still, according to Bo, he's still got a long way to go, but
Yeah.
Very well for what he's been through.
Yeah, that is, that's just good news.
Many prayers, many prayers have went up for him. And I tell people all the time, the leaning tree ain't the first one to fall. And I shared that with Ms. Walden. I said, you and Mr. Wade gonna be here a long time.
So I'd like to just ask us all to keep the Butts family in our prayers. To lose a life so young like that, it's just, it's just heart-wrenching.
Also keep the family of Greg Stewart in your prayers. Some of y'all remember Greg. He retired from here. He died Sunday morning.
Greg did?
Oh, my goodness, I didn't know that. I'm sorry to hear that.
Was it Sunday?
I think so.
It's Sunday morning, you said?
Sunday morning. Yeah, because when he left here, he went to work at George College.
Greg was a meter reader for, and then water maintenance for a long time.
Prayers, it's just, all we can do is pray in this hour, for everyone. So if there are no other comments or announcements, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Alright, we stand adjourned.